This is the city council meeting for September 13th, 2022 for the city of Bonny Lake. First thing we do is salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. And Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter. Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Present.
Councilmember McLehman.
Present.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Do we have a motion on Deputy Mayor Carter?
Oh, moved, seconded.
Okay. Did he just, is, do we have a reason?
Oh, no, yeah, he's, he's on a planned day off.
Okay. Oh, sweet. Okay, all in favor of excusing Deputy Mayor Carter from this meeting? Say aye.
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 Any nays? Very good, okay. And we do have an agenda modification. Let's see, Councilmember Evans has asked to add AB 22141, that's Resolution 3091, to tonight's Public Safety Committee issues. Are we going to take that up during public safety time, or are we doing it now?
Yeah, it comes up in item seven.
Okay, very good. All right, and now we can move on. We have announcements, appointments, and proclamations, and we have two proclamations this evening. Madam Clerk, does it matter which order I read them in?
First one is Beautify Bonny Lake.
Okay. I was going to read the other one first. All right, whereas since 2004, the annual event known as Beautify Bonny Lake has produced thousands of volunteer hours for the improvement of the community with community volunteers and businesses generously contributing time, materials, and money towards needed improvement projects. And whereas Beautify Bonny Lake strives to inspire increasingly numbers of citizens and businesses to donate time and materials each year to enhance the beauty of this city and provides a means to easily capture the goodwill of the citizens via their willingness to create permanent and positive improvements to the city with their participation. And whereas the city of Bonny Lake wishes to recognize the efforts of Beautify Bonny Lake on this 18th annual event. And whereas the current COVID-19 pandemic and recent area and west coast wildfire smoke has caused the Beautify Bonny Lake to revise the normal one-day mass participation event into a series of individual and small group efforts to improve the city's appearance throughout the month of September. And whereas Beautify Bonny Lake is a registered charitable 501(c)(3) organization organized to engage the community in positive and charitable services and to enhance the livability of the city. Now, therefore, I, Michael McCullough, mayor of the city of Bonny Lake, do hereby proclaim the month of September 22 as Beautify Bonny Lake Month. And we applaud Beautify Bonny Lake for their creativity in continuing this event and urge all citizens, property owners, and businesses to participate in Beautify Bonny Lake and support this great community effort by donating time, labor, talents, materials, and monetary contributions to the local improvement projects associated with this wonderful event. I do believe it deserves a... Mr. Mayor, can we get a picture with you out there?
Picture with you and Lily in our chair?
Absolutely. Do we do that now, or after?
Yeah, we'll do it now.
Okay. I'm wearing a 35-year-old suit. All right, the one question I have about it is I've seen a whole bunch of signs over by the parking lot and beyond in Fort Tinn. Do we have just as many signs on the other side of the city?
They're all going through.
Yeah. All right, we do have a second proclamation. This is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, September 2022. So whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer, or they report cancer, is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and the age of 15, this tragic disease is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people every year. An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from the long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded nearly 30 years ago by Stephen Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated, Kids Cancer Connection Incorporated, and Lions Club International are dedicated to helping these children and their families. Excuse me. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Seattle Children's Hospital, Mary Bridge Children's Hospital, and Madigan Army Medical Center in Tacoma, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsors toy distributions, family sailing programs, positive appearance services, pet-assisted therapy, Laughter Moon, laughter is healing, KCC Super Car Experience, educational programs, and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. And whereas the city of Bonny Lake is a caring community and part of a caring Washington state that supports children and families, I therefore, Michael McCullough, mayor of the city of Bonny Lake, Washington, do proclaim the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And witness thereof, I have here put my signature on it. I believe that deserves a applause as well. Okay. Now we can move on to our public hearings, citizen comments, and correspondence. And seeing as we don't have any public hearings tonight, we move on to citizen comments. Okay, everybody, this is where you have the chance to address the council on city business. You have five minutes if you wish to approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Council Mayor Dan Decker, 204170 East, Bonny Lake, Washington. I am a past council member, as you know. A wonderful person that's the head of the federal government has created Inflation Reduction Act. When the government gives an act a title, we can know for sure it does not mean what it implies. It always means the opposite from what I know. How much will this Inflation Reduction Act cost? No one can buy down inflation, and I believe that's what the government is trying to do with this inflation act, is buy up inflation, not bring it down. The central bank is on the rise. That would be the Federal Reserve, those that don't know that. Our Federal Reserve is a central bank of the queen, or excuse me, the king now. Without, without a control interest hike, help inflation rates of America go even higher. Pinocchio Joe has stated the cost of food and gas are down. All I can say is liar, liar pants on fire, because he understands that kind of mentality. Pinocchio states inflation rate is down to 8.3, and reality, inflation is at an all-time high of 15% to 17%, and is on the upward move because of the $8 to $9 trillion spent in the last nine months by the democratic socialists. Also, the fact that the gas lines have been stopped and no more drilling for oil and other resources. I expect taxation to happen wherever there's a group of democratic socialists in charge. Pinocchio Joe is the example. Thus, council vote, thus, the council vote, vote on the BNO tax to the stores and help this great nation go into the crapper. I believe that if the council does give us a BNO tax, it only creates one thing, more inflation. The businesses you tax today will only raise costs to offset the BNO tax. Therefore, the council will only help inflation grow in the city of Bonny Lake. Council, keep up the great work. Nothing like helping them democratic socialists destroy this great nation. And yes, the United States of America is a great nation. When we take back our industry from China, we'll be what we were 40 years ago. And let's think about it, giving away our economy, I'm not going to say the words because I don't really cuss that much. Well, I do, but not to you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Is there anybody else with a good of the order? This man.
937185th Avenue Place East, and we've never attended one of these before, so this was our first experience, and that's really what we wanted it to be, was just an experience. However, I do have a question. Didn't prepare any, any statements or anything like that. I know that we were doing as a city in the city council was, I think we asked a consulting firm to assess the Bonny Lake water rates, sewer and water rates, and I'm wondering whether we've gotten information back from that or not? And if we have, can it be shared with us as far as where we are with that?
Well, I believe the best way to tell you is we're, we are in the midst of it. It is, it is an issue that we are not sweeping under the rug or we're not ignoring. Mr. Vodapich is our city administrator, and as far as the consulting firm, do, do we have anybody? Ah, yes, yeah, so we've retained a consulting firm that's looking at water, sewer, and storm rates. They're in the midst of their study, and then it will be presented to the council at a future workshop. So it's not completed yet.
Do you have any idea as far as timeline?
Sherry, I don't know if we had a timeline on that.
Probably within the next month, month and a half.
And Sherry is our chief financial officer. She's the one on the screen. She's not in attendance.
Okay, cool. And so then I, I, we are getting the agendas, so we would see it come up and be presented at an, on the agenda for?
Oh, absolutely.
Like a workshop, or, yeah, at a workshop? Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Workshops are the first and third Wednesdays. So Tuesdays, Tuesdays, yeah. Council member, or council meetings are the second and fourth, and there's no meetings on the fifth Tuesday.
And, yeah, and you might want to bring some snacks and a sleeping bag. We tend to have our workshops go for a while lately.
But you can come and go. You don't have to spend the...
I got a snack list going.
No kidding. Okay, is there anybody else with a good of the order? Okay, seeing none. I hide it. Oh, here it is. Okay, we have no correspondence. Next would be the committee reports. Can we have a report on the finance committee, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Carter is out today, so I sat in for him as chair. Today, we had a presentation, a personal update from our HR manager, Brian Sandler. I have that here. We did, we have an assistant planner who will be starting on 9/16, so just a few days from now. His name is Russ Schwab. Higher letters out for that. We have some conditional letters out for a senior building inspector with a tentative start date of 9/19, and an accounting specialist cashier, tentative start date of 10/3. We have receipt of applications for maintenance worker two. Interviews were conducted last week. We do have a opening for police officer. A lateral, lateral O R board was conducted on 9/1, and we have continuous fulfillment for before and after school care. And we do have an official retirement date for mechanic Al Young, which will be 9/15, so later this week. We, and that is the, the latest on the weekly staff update. After, yeah, after that, we, we had a discussion on Resolution 3068, which is an amendment to the Murray's Agreement that will be coming forward to a workshop as well for discussion. We had a action, business action item on AB 22131, Resolution 3083, which was a second amendment to the Tacoma Point site lease agreement. This is for the cell towers and the lease of that on our water towers. We had a discussion and AB 22131, Resolution 308084, on the opioid settlement allocation agreement, that has moved forward to a future consent agenda. AB 22124, ordinance D 22124, amending, I'm sorry, D 121, I believe, amending the Bonny Lake Municipal Code relating to miscellaneous department fees. We reviewed our minutes, and we had some open discussion about the budget process, and we adjourned.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Evans. How long was Mr. Young with the city? At least 20 years, I believe? Yeah, well deserved retirement. Absolutely. All right. Okay, next we have a community development committee.
Thank you very much. Yes, Community Development Committee did meet on September 6th, open to the public upstairs, of course, at our assigned time, 5 o'clock. Well, you had several items of business included, the on-call building inspection plan review services, that's an on-needed type basis, right? So we have coverage when we need it. We wouldn't be contracting with them all the time, just when we need them. That was recommended for approval, move forward to council. Also, we looked at a resolution for a supplemental agreement with professional services for PMTX for the Fennel Creek Trail closeout project. That's the piece that's already done. It's, many of you have already walked on it. They're just doing a lot of the paperwork and everything, getting that all squared away. That was recommended for approval. Resolution also 3082, which is a supplemental agreement with another professional services agreement with Crozan for the Allen York project, the ball field specifically. They're doing more testing out there to ensure that the soil is a proper compactation and all that kind of fancy stuff to make sure its foundation is correct. As the, you know, council is probably aware, the project's a little bit spread out because of the extreme amount of rain that we did get. We should come back, but we're out of the rain. And where did it go? It seems like... Also, Resolution 3086, which is a contract award for TMG Services for Ballpark Well, that's the one over by, what's the elementary over there? Emerald Hills, right? Yeah, that's where the Ballpark Well. So that is the last unit that they're replacing the chlorination system on. They went from well site to well site to make them, you know, compatible, the new technology that can be maintained, kind of an ongoing maintenance thing there, and that was recommended for approval. And also, the Resolution 3087 for the procurement of the chiller. I think Public Safety's probably seen that one before. This is the actual contract for the procurement of the chiller itself. It has an extraordinarily long lead time, so it's on the order of 10 plus months or something like that, but maybe it'll be installed before next summer, right? Yes. You know, supply chain issues with all that stuff nowadays is just amazing. That was recommended for approval, and we read our minutes and notes, and we approved those, and that was it for our items that evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Okay, next would be Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety met today at 3:30. We received a report from police on all the activities over the last month. Received a report from East Pierce Fire and Rescue as well, from our emergency management coordinator, and from our prosecutor's department. We did review some action, and we've moved forward to the consent agenda tonight, which is out-of-state travel. AB 22126 for Detective Vance to attend a auto theft investigation training in Lake Tahoe. We also moved forward to tonight to full council agenda under Public Safety, a grant for an emergency backup generator for this particular facility. Police has been, have been awarded a grant for a drone, which is, is going to be pretty awesome once we can get that up and running, probably looking at the beginning of next year, once training's completed. And it's not just a cheapy little drone. This thing has the FLIR night vision, heat sensing, all that kind of stuff, and it has the ability to drop, drop small packages, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah. Think, think.
How small.
Like, it's like a light.
Think Hunger Games.
Yeah.
Let's see here. And then the police department will also be participating in the Cancer Society. Washington wears pink, so from October 1st to October 31st, our officers will have pink badges on. Nice. Our, our police support staff will be wearing pink polos as well, and they'll be sending out some links to some fundraisers for the Cancer Society.
That's for breast cancer, yes?
Yeah, yeah. September is National Preparedness Month. There will be a great shake coming on 10/20, at 10/20, and that'll be a preparedness event. And we talked about Bonny Lake Alert, which is our local emergency alert system. Its goal is to be live by the end of this week, where you can sign up and get alerts for all sorts of different emergencies in Wash, or in, in the city, the county, and the state as well, and how to prepare for certain events and make sure you get notifications when those happen. We had a open discussion. We reviewed, we, we sent forth a review to update our drug possession, or request to review our drug possession and paraphernalia's rules, to see if there's any changes that have happened since the last time we passed those. If there's anything else we can do to be a little more aggressive on, on prosecution of those now that some things in the state have changed recently. And that was it for that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Evans. Chief, I imagine Vance deserves the trip to Lake Tahoe, considering how busy he's going to be with the auto thefts when he comes back.
Already been busy. He started in March, and we're already four times the amount of thefts in 2022 versus 2021.
I mean, it is no laughing matter, but it's, I do understand that.
We hope we can get him in training, definitely. Hopefully, it'll stem the tide a little bit.
Oh, I hope so. All right, thank you, Chief. All righty, I don't believe we have any other reports, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, seconded.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed? So the consent agenda for September 13th, 2022 has been adopted. All right, now we have a discussion action item. Madam Clerk.
This is AB 22141, Resolution 3091. The council motion would be to discuss and authorize the mayor to sign the city's hazard mitigation grant application for an emergency backup generator for the Justice and Municipal Center.
So moved, seconded.
Have any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Evans?
Thank you, everyone, for entertaining a add-on so quickly in the day. The reason for that is this grant application came forward, and we were, we haven't think until Friday to, to apply for the grant, and that would be for a emergency backup generator for this facility. Any of us that remember the fires know how difficult it was in here, because we don't have keys on our doors, and we couldn't get in because of the key lock situation with no power. Sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to dig at it every time. But the, the great thing about this is this is a federal grant that we're applying for. Normally, there is 75, 25% split. This particular one is a 90-10, and that 10% is split between the state and the municipality. So our portion of that would only be 5%. The initial costs are just under $300,000, so that would put our cost, if awarded, at about $15,000 to put in an emergency backup generator here, which is a pretty significant increase to this building for a really reasonable cost. So I would request that we approve this tonight so that Regine can get this application presented and sent in, and, and fingers crossed, we can get that and get a generator here sometime soon.
Okay, Councilmember Watson?
Councilmember Evans, that include installation too, as the additional charge?
That's out the door, everything complete, yeah.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
That's good. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Okay, since this was added at the last minute, we do have time for citizen commentary on the matter. If anybody wishes to approach to speak about this action item only, you have five minutes. Okay, oh, Mr. Decker, did you want to come up?
You are, you are referencing the emergency generator?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to say that a very good idea, and thank you for that. And on the emergency generator, I hope that you're looking at it for operating process to be more than just diesel or gasoline, and look at propane or other ways of causing it to operate, just in case it's needed. And I believe propane would be, generator would be an interesting one, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. All right, any further discussion? Okay, I believe we're ready to move to a vote on this resolution, so all in favor of adopting AB 22141, Resolution 3091, a resolution of the city of, of the city council of the city of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, authorizing the mayor to sign the city's hazard mitigation grant application for an emergency backup generator for the Justice and Municipal Center. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and with none opposed, I believe everybody did vote aye, Madam Clerk, for the, for the minutes. So AB 22141, Resolution 3091 has been adopted. All righty. Now we're moving on to full council issues. Madam Clerk, could you read the full title for this, please?
This is motion AB 11, no, that should be AB 22125. The council motion would be to waive the open recruitment provisions of Resolution Number 2296 to facilitate the internal promotion of an appointed officer of the city.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, I believe this matter was discussed last week at the workshop. Do we have any further discussion on the matter that might have changed since last week?
If I may?
Yes, Councilmember Evans.
I, I don't, I think I recall that this was in there somewhere, but in, if, if approved, the position that Chuck is currently in would not be backfilled, which would leave an additional $200,000 for budgetary reasons, which would, could facilitate a, another officer or, or something else in the, in the, the, the structure, so.
Yes, that's correct. That is correct. That is correct, and we have Ms. Ryerson nodding her head, too.
The issue on the table, of course, is the open recruitment concept.
Correct, yeah. Which that would save $49,000, according to the, the resolution that was brought forward, the budgetary thing defined there.
Okay, and Councilmember Swatman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, and, and I appreciate the new administration probably kind of overlooked the open recruitment scenario early on. It's not something that's new, you know? It's, it's kind of something that I've always championed for a, a public facility, a public entity, is to at least give it a go, you know, open it up for everyone to try to, you know, it's not a, in my mind, a $49,000 effort necessarily. Could have easily been posted at A W C job board or what have you, and then they'd be like, well, we did post it. Obviously, kind of an overlook kind of thing, so I guess there's some kind of legal term for what theta complete is, or whatever it is. It's, it is what it is.
Don't leave anything Latin as a legal term.
Yeah, is that what it is? Yeah. You know, I'm going to vote no on it, and I would happily extend it out to whatever is required, because that's kind of why they're in a pinch, because it's kind of in the code for, what, a year or something like that, a year's appointment? No, no big deal. I think the next step will be the significant effort to try to... to try to figure out, you know, uh, with the qualifications of the, uh, recommended candidate to make sure that they match up with the job, uh, requirements. So that's a future effort. This effort is waiving open recruitment.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Is there any further discussion that we have? Okay, Councilmember McLehman's.
Um, yeah, I endorse the idea of open recruitment. I think it's fair. Um, I liken this to the idea that, uh, you want to, when you have a position, you want to know that you've got the best people in those positions. Uh, it, it, it's similar to, um, celebrating victories of, of sports teams. It wouldn't be very much of a celebration if there wasn't a game plate, right? So it's, it's good that, uh, you know, certain Chuck's going to get the position because he's qualified and liked and, 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 but at least, uh, let's give him a chance to get to bat and, and compete. So I'm going to vote against this because I think, uh, the competition's important.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember McLehman's. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? All right, I believe we're ready to take it to a vote. So on the resolution, AB 22, oh, actually it's a motion, uh, AB 22125, a motion of the city council of the city of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, waiving the open recruitment provisions of Resolution Number 2296 to facilitate the internal promotion of an appointed officer of the city. All in favor of waiving such recruitment, say aye.
Aye.
And how many ayes do we have? Let's see, we have one, two, three, four. Okay, all opposed?
Nay.
Okay, and we have one, two. So I believe the official vote, and we do have our deputy mayor, who's not in attendance, so the official vote for this matter is four to two and I believe it's been adopted. So congratulations, Mr. McEwen. That step isn't there yet. Well, that step isn't there yet, but yes. Uh, I believe I did jump the gun on him. Um, all right. Um, that would be the last, uh, full council issue that we have, uh, tonight. We are now going to adjourn, adjourn, uh, the council meeting and go into what we call an executive session for our members who, this is their first time attending one of these. Um, we can spend no more than 20 minutes, um, outside of the public meeting on this matter. Uh, the, uh, it's to discuss, uh, pending litigation with no action to follow. So, uh, what happens at this point is we just adjourn this meeting and we're going to talk for, uh, no more than 20 minutes. And then we would be adjourned for the night too.